Wallace, seven, eight.
Cameron, number nine. Number nine. Vogel, ten.
Shan, twelve.
Port, eleven. Eleven. Z, two.
Wright, four.
Khan, number five.
If it was turned on, they're already, they've already been unmuted, so.
I was requested to let everyone know, please don't wrap them up and don't put them in your pocket.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Jones, if you would call around, please.
I'd be happy to. This is the roll call for the meeting of May 22, 7:00 PM, City Council Chambers. Councillor Vogel, present. Councillor Wallace.
Here.
Councillor Wright.
Yeah.
Councillor Z, here. Councillor Cameron.
Here.
Councillor Dunleavy.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Khan.
Present.
Councillor Lane.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor McCauley.
Here.
Councillor Preston.
Here.
And Councillor President Shan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, late files.
There is one late file, you'll see on your desk. It is... Right here. It is Order 458. It's a resolution submitted by Councillor McCauley.
Motion to waive the rules, accept the late files, and...
Send this one to Public Works and Safety?
Second.
Do you want Committee of the Whole? And Committee of the Whole?
Okay. On the Public Works and Safety and Committee of the Whole, there is second?
Second.
Roll call.
It's on the late file. Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Wright.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Dunleavy.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
Councillor Preston.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Although it says Mayor's Comment, we actually do public comment next, so for public comments, we'll let the clerk go get the sheet from the door, and for those that are on Zoom, please raise your hands now. I see one hand up right now, Marian Vessi and Mia Young. By the time the clerk gets back, we'll have all of the Zoom hands. So I see three. I see Margot Casey's on as well. I see Michael Lane. All right, so I see three for Zoom. So I see Marian Vessi, Mia Young, and Michael Lane. So first is Marian Vessi. I'm allowing you to speak, name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hi there. My name is Marian Vessi. I'm from 10, 10th Street in Newburyport. And I'm calling in to testify that I want to see support for affordable housing at the Brown School, particularly for elderly. And I report that the RFI would be unencumbered by restrictions around potential use of the gym at this point for a number of units. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vessi. All right. Next is Mia Young.
Hi, my name is Mia Young. I live at 11 Jefferson Court in Newburyport. And I totally agree with everything Marian just said. We desperately need more affordable housing in Newburyport, and I would love to see the Brown School used for affordable housing and no encumbrances in terms of the gym. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Coming into Council Chambers, first on the list is Stephanie Nikotik.
Stephanie Nikotik, 19th Street. I agree with other residents opposed to the sale of the Brown School property. And I think the RFI's wording will result only in concepts based on a sale. I am also concerned the council's desire for concepts requiring alternative zoning is based on a belief that low-density projects cannot get public funding and perhaps a lack of awareness that the original schoolhouse is eligible for funding based on its historic status. As an example, a vacant 1890s mill building in Lemonster is now being converted into 17 market-rate apartments with the help of a state Underutilized Properties Program grant, low-cost Massachusetts development loans, and federal and state historic building tax credits. Adaptive reuse of the Brown School could benefit from all of the same types of funding in addition to funding for affordable housing. I will send you details by mail, email, and Director Port is aware of funding opportunities for historic building rehabilitation. The RFI as proposed is most likely to result in concepts which may never gain consensus and will delay even longer the Brown School's use and care. Thank you.
Thank you. And so there is one whose hand went down and back up. So Ms. Casey, I'm allowing you to speak. And that's it for the folks on Zoom.
Yes, I apologize. I didn't realize I was supposed to keep my hand up.
That's all right.
I'm Margot Casey from 487A Merrimack Street. And I'm here in regards to the RFI for the Brown School. I'm in support of it being for affordable housing for seniors. I'm reiterating that we have the dire needs for affordable housing for seniors. While understanding that there's a need for a gym, I, in this case, I would like to see the RFI not include the gym in order to give it the wider possibility of the number of units for affordable housing for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. All right. That is it for the Zoom folks. Next is Jason LaCroix.
Evening all councillors.
Jason LaCroix, Yankee Homecoming, 14 Hill Street, Newburyport, Mass. Before you tonight, you'll see a comprehensive package for the permitting of the full nine days of homecoming, including vendor placement, road closures, and parks and properties usage. Obviously, time is of the essence. I hope everything is to your liking. And on a side note, I think Steve Bradbury is an excellent choice for fire chief. Feel free to call me if you have any questions.
Thank you. Victoria Carr.
My name is Victoria Carr. I live at 1 Hill Street in Newburyport. I moved to Newburyport over 40 years ago. And when I moved here, it was a very affordable town. I rented apartments in two different places, and I finally was able to buy a condo. However, in my senior years, I am trying to downsize, and I need another residence to go to. And I don't want to leave Newburyport. And it's virtually impossible. Any of the places I go to look at, they immediately break up the price range on it. So I don't know where I'm going to go. I don't know where I'm going to be able to get the money to pay the continued taxes, et cetera. So I, and I've always been involved in affordable housing, so I know how important it is for people to be able to have a home. And so I support everything that everybody else has talked about, and I do hope that we can make great strides with the Brown School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Next is Rita McHalek.
Good evening. Rita McHalek, 53 Warren Street. I'm here to give support to the RFI for read, adaptive use of the Brown School and for affordable housing. And I'm in agreement with all the other people that have also spoken strongly for, for those purposes of the Brown School also. I think it's really important to preserve the building. It has a wonderful location in the center of Newburyport. And it would be great to have it use as residential property and keep the character. Thank you. And keep the character of the building intact, along with the residents intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jean Costello.
Jean Costello, 522 Merrimack Street. Please add my voice to the chorus for affordable housing. I was here on Monday when many citizens were here. And once again, I was impressed with the engagement. I was impressed with the fact-finding that people are bringing through their own research, like we saw with Ms. Nikotik. And also, we had some professionals who do work in affordable housing. So I'm really looking forward to an open, engaged process. And I want to amplify what Chair Shan said at the end of this meeting. We can do this. Let's do something we're all really proud of afterward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Madeline Nash.
Good evening. Madeline Nash, 19 Arlington Street. I'm also in support of the RFI for affordable housing at the Brown School. As a member of the Housing Trust, I've been involved in many discussions about this, and I appreciate all the work that the council has put into this. I'm very excited about this opportunity to move forward and get some real information from developers on potential ideas for the redevelopment. I have seen other communities redevelop their school buildings for affordable housing on the North Shore, Beverly, Salem, Gloucester. It's, it can be done. And it puts the school building back into active use as a real asset to the community and meets a really pressing need for seniors. So we can do it, like other communities. And I do think that, you know, the Kelly School is beautiful, and I'm glad to see it put back into active use. And that is providing high-end market-rate housing. I'd like to see us do something different at the Brown School and address the needs of our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. And that is it for public comment. So Mayor's Comment.
All right. Good evening. So I didn't think I was going to have much to say tonight, but then it turns out I had a lot of things I wanted to update you on, a lot around projects. So just last week, I had a meeting with the plant manager and the attorneys for the PCI Sequins Company. That was the Opportunity Way explosion from a few weeks ago. This, this was my first contact with the company. I had reached out to them a number of times. And then finally, this call was set up. And it was set up after the call that they had with our federal legislators. But it was good to connect with them. Right now, they're exploring how to safely take down the building. So they're working closely with the Building Commissioner Greg Earls. We also asked about their employees during this time, and they're all still being paid. And we asked for any kind of updates, if that was going to change, so we could assist on the state level with their employment. PCI has brought in a third party to conduct their investigation. And there's also OSHA and the State Fire Marshal, who has also opened up investigations into the explosion. Governor Moheely, very exciting. We'll be coming to Newburyport on Friday, January 2 for the raising of the pride flag. We're going to have a brief ceremony here at 4 o'clock. I hope you all can make it. The pride flag will be flown here at City Hall all month. And then the following day will be the city's first pride parade. That's Saturday, June 3 at 12:00 PM, starting at Bartlett Mall. And just my office has been working very closely with Marshal Murray, so everyone can have a safe and fun day. I want to offer my sincere thanks and just best wishes to Head Librarian Sarah Kelso. As you all know, her last day at the library will be June 7. And although she wasn't in this role for an incredibly long time, she, she put a lot of great things in place. So again, I wish her luck in her, whatever she does moving forward. But I also hope that we can continue some of these things that she started here. And we will, I will start to work with the Library Board of Directors right away on the search process. And we're working on an interim leadership solution at this time. And I'll come back, back to, once that, once that plan is in place. The Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS, is finally finished. So that's up on the website, so you can check that out. So I wanted to thank Carl Seidman and his team, his team at Civic Moxie for all their great work. We had a steering committee of stakeholders from all over the community that, that was involved in this process as well. So again, that report is online. We're actually trying to put this report into action right away. One of the recommendations on that report was for an economic development manager here at City Hall. And again, that's in our budget this year. So we hope to get that in the planning office. Bartlett Mall Restoration Project is moving right along. You know, we're all moving the permitting continues to move forward in a positive direction. There's going to be a presentation for you all in June to get you updated on that, so we can hopefully close the loop on the bond order. So that's coming up in June. The Cutter West End Fire Station is still going on. A lot of people here supporting it tonight. Appreciate that. So Construction Dynamics was awarded the bid, and they had their first pre-construction meeting the other day. That was a very positive meeting. Looks like we're, we're ready to proceed. The fire department actually start moving out of the West End Station this weekend. And then they're looking to break ground or start beginning work on the old facility around June 19. And the contractor has 15 months to complete the project by the summer of 2024. 59 Low Street is still moving forward. EJ, EJE Architects is still working with our team. We have formed a building committee. Not all together yet, but city staff, DPS, planning, NYSS, Mayor's Office. And there's going to be some community members on there as well, so we can continue to update you as we move forward through that design process. Central Waterfront Bulkhead is moving on as well. We've kind of executed the grant agreements with FEMA, the EDA, and then the Seaport Economic Council. So that's all moving in the right direction. Bids are due on June 1, so I'll have some more information after June 1, once we get the bids in. And that work is going to start after Labor Day. There's another thing in my report around playgrounds and courts. We have a lot of great projects going on from the CPA funds going through. So we're talking about Cashman. We're talking about Lower Atkinson. And we're talking about playgrounds, first universally accessible playgrounds at Bartlett Mall and Lower Atkinson down by the Pioneer League. So a lot of good things going on there. Those are all moving forward. So I just wanted to let you know that those things keep moving on. Thursday upstairs, I know we'll have a budget and finance meeting going on down here, but the Human Rights Commission will have their Peace Prize awards. If you can stop by there, that would be great. This is, I believe, their 10th year doing these awards. And I think there's 12 different students getting honored in the community and some adults as well. But those are really great awards, and thanks to the HRC for doing that. Memorial Day, we'll have our usual ceremony right here at City Hall. So I hope you all can make it on Monday. It's supposed to be a nice day. We'll meet up at City Hall, CBS, around 10:30, and then we'll march down to the ceremony here at 11. And this is the longer march, so get your steps in. We go down to the waterfront, and then we go all the way to the Veterans Cemetery. Again, it should be a great day. And I just wanted to mention two more things. Byron Matthews Memorial is happening this, this weekend, Sunday, 1 to 4, at the Custom House Maritime Museum out back on the grass. The family wanted me to make sure you guys all were invited. I think it's on our website, and I think we've sent you an email as well. But just wanted to remind you that that's happening. And finally, you have a vote tonight for our next fire chief. And it's an exciting night. I want to appreciate all the firefighters for being here. Of course, I want to appreciate all you for being here because you've been busy lately. A lot, a lot of action going on in the city, and you guys have just had great response times knocking down fires very quickly and really being there for the community. So I wanted to thank you for that. But they're here tonight because the man sitting behind me has gained the respect of each and every one of them in this room. And I think it's an exciting time for the fire department. I don't think we've had that for a long time. So I look forward to your vote tonight for our next fire chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions? All right.
Councillor Wallace. Motion to waive the rules and move up Appointment 403 on the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
So roll call on moving Appointment 403 up to the front. Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Wright.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Dunleavy.
Walk.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
Councillor Preston.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Wallace.
Right. Motion to approve Appointment 403, Stephen Bradbury III.
Second.
Fire Chief.
Second.
Acting Councillor McCauley.
Thank you. We just had Steve come in to the council, to our committee beforehand. So we had a nice chat with him. He grew up in Newburyport. Born and raised here. He started as a call firefighter in 1993, full-time in 1996. And from 2000 to 2022, he was the deputy fire chief. He has been acting fire chief and the emergency management director since July 2022. When asked what his main priorities are, said, one, the, the, getting the West End Fire Station done on budget and on time. Two, getting new tenants at the West End Station. I hope I got that right. And three, start looking forward to working on renovations, things that need to be done to bring the headquarters up to date and safe for all the firefighters. I've heard much praise. We have heard from different people tonight. Heard from the mayor, his actions and recent incidences. I told them they were efficient, professional, kind with the people that were displaced. So I think he will be a great asset as a fire chief. So our committee voted 3-0 to recommend to the full committee. Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call on the Appointment of 403, Stephen Bradbury. Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Wright.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
Yes.
Councillor Dunleavy.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes, absolutely.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
Councillor Preston.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
That would be 11-0. Appointment carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the firefighters for coming, showing your support. That's a wonderful thing. I really appreciate it. I want to thank my wife for all the years, putting up with the paging and the late nights and all that stuff. And the council for the support, and the mayor's office, Andrew, and the mayor himself. So look forward to the days and months and years ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Thanks for showing up. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Come again.
Thank you for coming. Yes. Appreciate you guys coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
My pleasure. That's why we did it early.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming in. Take care. Thank you.
You waited for the whole table.
Yeah. I know. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Since the almost cleared out, let's keep moving. Consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. The approval of minutes for May 8. There are four communications. The first two are events, a block party on Prospect Street, August 3, block party on 14 Dove Street, August 5. Both scheduled to go to license and permits. The next is receive and file, which is the Newburyport Maritime Days, June 30 to July 10, Custom House Lawn. Communication 486 is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. That's to go to budget and finance. There are three transfers. Transfer 154, DPS free cash, $253,000, and snow and ice, $17,000, to snow and ice expenses, $271,000. Transfer 155, health insurance general fund cash, $61,000, to same amount insurance premiums. And transfer 156, fire department dues and memberships, $1,291, emergency management coordinator, $922, and emergency management deputy coordinator, $368. Those three are to go to budget and finance. There are three appointments coming in. Appointment 404, Edward Neumer, 8 Lucy Drive to the Sturrock Commission until 6/1/2026. That's to go to planning and development. Appointment 405 is Ronald Thurlo, 28 Hancock Street to the Harbor Commission until 6/1/2026. That's to go to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 406 is Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane as city solicitor from 7/1/2023 to 1/31/2024. They're out of Braintree, Mass. That's to go to general government and committee of the whole. Following items are removed from their respective committees. General Government, we've got Communication 464 and Order 428, both related to the Brown School RFI. License and permits, following applications, 134, 135, 136, 137, 138, 139, and Communication 484, all coming out. Planning and development, Appointment 391, 394, and 396. Orders 450 and 456. And finally, Public Works and Safety, Appointment 403. Ordnance 150, 151. 152 is been pulled by the sponsor. It is not coming out at this point. Ordnance 153 is also coming out. And that, with those changes, consent agenda.
Councillor Khan?
Yeah. Councillor President, I'd like to just remove Communication 46 from the consent agenda.
It's the Comprehensive Economic Strategy. That's out.
Councillor Vogel.
I just have a question. Did we not do Transfer 157 and 158?
They're going to budget and finance. I'm sorry, which one?
153. 157 and 158.
Are they on your?
Totally noted.
I'm sorry. I don't have the updated.
Do you have the whole agenda on my computer?
Well, I can say this. Transfer 157 and 158 go onto budget and finance.
Does she approve as amended?
Second.
Roll call.
So roll call and approve the consent agenda as amended. Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace. Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. Now that leads us to second reading of appointments, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
You are correct.
Correct. Back on track.
Appointment 398, Eileen Hunch, Grady, 10 Cushing Ave, council on aging until 6/1/2026. And I might mention Appointment 401 and MAR, 17 Otis Place to the same, council on aging until 6/1/2026.
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
That would lead us to Order 457, FY 2024 revolving funds spending limits.
Refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Order 457 to go to budget and finance. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. Now that leads us to second reading of appointments, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
You are correct.
Correct. Back on track.
Appointment 398, Eileen Hunch, Grady, 10 Cushing Ave, council on aging until 6/1/2026. And I might mention Appointment 401 and MAR, 17 Otis Place to the same, council on aging until 6/1/2026.
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
That would lead us to Order 457, FY 2024 revolving funds spending limits.
Refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Order 457 to go to budget and finance. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Second reading of Ordinance 135, zoning amendments with respect to ITIF, removing a residential use as amended.
Motion approved. Second reading, second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Second reading of Ordinance 135, first and seconded. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Committee items.
Counsel Z.
Nothing coming out tonight. Budget continues tomorrow and Thursday, there will be a standing meeting of budget, but it's not a workshop, just so you don't plan to come. The committee is gonna try and clear about the five or six things that came in tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Community services.
Nothing tonight.
All right, general government. So to give the committee a report from Monday, we did review the Communication 464 and amended it to remove some of the items that had been called out for the AMI that was listed in there. We did go from greater than 60% to less than 60%. We also amended it so that we read request for interest, not, yeah, request expressions of interest, to make sure it was in alignment with the actual order, 428. I know there is much, not as much unity as I would hope we have with these two orders, with this order and this communication. It is a very first step to get something started with the Brown School. It is an opportunity to get some ideas. It is an opportunity for us to start doing something that will make us proud, that will get us to a point where we can have something special at the Brown School that we can all look back and say, we helped do this. So what the committee did was we amended Communication 464 and then we opted to receive and file it, as we do with most communications, 3 to 0. And we made that, we amended Order 428 so that it specifically designated the RFI Communication 464 as part of the order. So that is part of the actual order that lists the direction to give the mayor and Director Port the opportunity to send the structure that we created in this RFI out for developers to put their ideas out to us. So with that, I would say Order 428, we approved 3 to 0. And we received and filed 464, 3 to 0 as well. So with that, motion to approve Order 428.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Donahue. Discussion?
Counsel Z.
Thank you. First thing is just a correction. If I was at the meeting, too, I believe that the amendment on the AMI was not to make it less than 60%. It was to strike that language altogether. So that was just a point of order. So thank you for the opportunity. I just want to rise in opposition to the issuance of this RFI, which probably not come as a great surprise to many. I think tonight, I could give almost any speech that you're likely to hear tonight about this is a positive step and it's this, and hopefully we'll get the information. But unfortunately, I don't find those assertions to be true. And I've been on this ride for a long time and I want to state in about six minutes some of my opposition to this. So first thing is on the process itself. The last time we had a big vote on the Brown School, I wrote up a whole memo about the last five years and I thought about updating again. Nobody wants to hear it anymore, so I didn't write it up, but I did want to talk about it. We first came up with this concept of having an ad hoc and we formed it by order. And the first iteration of the ad hoc simply fails to meet for, give or take, six months. Just doesn't even make an effort to meet and unfortunately sort of falls apart in that respect. Then we reboot the ad hoc in a new effort to try and maybe stimulate some conversation. And the new ad hoc meets five or six times, but essentially completely fails to either follow its charter, which was stipulated by order, or to have public comment, or any sort of meaningful public comment. It has a moderator who was unilaterally selected by whom I'm still not sure, with a specific, apparently, idea. So it's kind of hobbled from the start. And so it's just sort of off to a bad start, then we kind of can the ad hoc, or the ad hoc dissolves on its own, and we come back to the council and we have a few meetings on the topic and we produce the document that you see. It's not to say that there wasn't any good work done in that time, but it's sort of hard to stand on that as a point of pride, as something that we would be happy about. And so really, the process is really critical. On the merits itself, as the president mentioned, I don't believe that this document reflects an overall consensus view, which is a big part of these ad hocs, is really to build up, knowing when you need a high vote count. Typically, you work really hard to do that. And so, you know, we really have essentially, in my opinion, and these are of course my opinions, we've said, well, we don't want to really make some hard decisions now. We want to sort of put those off to a later time slash defer to developers essentially to tell us, quote, what they need. That's been a very common theme and it's couched typically in saying, we're just gonna get information from the market, but we are unable to come up with a public consensus position that is, that can be reflected in this proposal. And I sat back to myself as I was preparing and I was thinking to myself, my, how things have changed. Now our goal is to defer to developers and let them tell us what we're gonna do in our neighborhoods. And one thing that's been very frustrating was at least one counselor stated things like, well, we haven't really had a conversation with the neighbors for a while and the neighborhood has changed. I've heard that a couple times. If you can find a neighborhood that wants to welcome infill and over density, I'd love to meet them, because I haven't found that to be the case yet. And interestingly, in this RFI, we've taken years of work, hours of work, and just sort of said it's either not important, or it's, you know, not worth considering at all. And in particular, the zoning, you know, which I remember, because I sponsored it, took 18 months out of my life. And that was meant to be the study, absent a project, what the property could hold. That's typically what zoning is. And now we're saying, yeah, please respond to the zoning, but if you can't do it, don't worry about it. And I'm not sure what else we'll apply that standard to in the city, what other zoning we, quote, won't worry about it and let them make the case where they can't make it. Perhaps we should do that on Waterfront West or in other neighborhoods and defer, again, to the developer. On the council itself, I'm very troubled that we continue to fly too high. You know, there is consensus around the need for affordable housing, myself included. I think to a person, you'll find 100% support for that on this council. Unfortunately, life is more in the details. And the way I look at it is that's our job. You know, it's acceptable and understandable for residents to come to the mic and say, I support affordable housing. It's someone else's job, ours, to sit here and figure out what the details are around that, build the consensus, and hopefully get to a place where we can move forward. And in my opinion, we've somewhat failed to do that here. So I'm really feeling like this is a setback for my ward, because certainly there is a desire to move this building forward. And like many, it's been frustrating. I mean, I get the calls all the time. Why can't the building be changed? Why is it falling apart? All these sorts of things. But the best way forward typically would be to, you know, move forward together. And that doesn't feel like what this is. So in closing, you know, my last kind of issue is that at our core, our whole job is to be a fiduciary, which to me, you know, there's all these fancy terms for it, but typically what it means is just treating the public money like it was your own, the public property. And I wouldn't do this if I personally owned this. I wouldn't just throw it out there without knowing exactly sort of where my bounds were on things. I also probably wouldn't entertain giving away a six-plus million dollar building away for free and then somehow magically thinking that that makes the city overall more affordable. So I'm frustrated. You know, I'd hoped for more. I do think that, you know, effort was expended for that. I'm grateful. There is time that was put into this. It just isn't the outcome that I was hoping for and I will oppose it tonight. And those are my reasons. Thank you.
For the discussions. Counsel Cameron.
Thank you, President. Yeah, I'm gonna support this and I know, I think most of us have been in several of the general government meetings on this, so, you know, my supporting this is not a surprise. Yeah, I think clearly, there is consensus around the need for affordable housing. There are certain details that need to be worked out about that, exactly who that might be targeted to or for, the number of units, all of that, you know, very important stuff. So, you know, there is a general consensus on that. And again, we're still at the informational stage. Maybe there will be a cum laude consensus moment sometime in the future, maybe not. That's why we have votes and that's why we have either, you know, majority or supermajority thresholds. So I don't view this as kicking the can down the road. I see it as trying to get a little bit more information. The last time this actually went out to bid, youth services was part of the package. I think that was the 2017 version, when we did get three RFPs, all very different. And, you know, maybe one of those would have worked, or two of those would have worked, or three of those would have worked, or none of them would have worked, but, you know, that process did not go forward and that's why we're still where we're at. I think where there was, if not consensus, at least compromise, you know, some of us aren't as keen on a gym or community space, others are. So that door has been left open and if a developer can think through how that might aren't as keen on a gym or community space, others are. So that door has been left open, and if a developer can think through how that might look, or suggestions on the zoning, or other potential partnerships, I think, you know, that will be information that will be helpful through this process. I do think in terms of neighborhood impact, housing and, I wouldn't call it over density because I don't think I'm ever going to be in favor of over density, whatever that number might be, you know, is something that I'm going to be supportive of. But we can't be saying we want to keep the housing units number small because we want to minimize the impact to the community nearby, the residents, the abutters, and let's put a gym in, too. I think they're both going to have a neighborhood impact. And again, I think this gives us some time to kind of look at that and see what those impacts are. I certainly think there'll be lots of opportunities, and there should be, for more abutter, you know, input into the process. I think they get a little bit more of a vote than any other citizen, but we are acting on behalf of the whole community. I've lived on either side of that location, not within the 300 feet or so as an official abutter, but I used the Brown School. My daughter was one of the last classes, if not the last class that was there, you know, several years ago before it closed down. We've used it for youth services. I voted there. I tore my meniscus in November of 2019 playing basketball. If there is ever a basketball gym there, I will be one of the first in line to be playing there. But I think, you know, our commitments are to try to do something for affordable housing, preserve the playground, preserve the building, minimize impact to the neighborhood, deal with the parking, deal with the snow parking. And if we do the community space gym, you know, how does that all, you know, how does that work in a way that doesn't overwhelm the site? So I think this is a positive step. Again, we may never be an 11 to 0 vote on any of this down the road, but I think this is a step that lots of other communities have taken a long time. It was mentioned in public comment about 17 units in Leominster. My own original home community of Bridgewater had a school sit for 20 years, and they finally developed it, and it's got lots of public amenities, including some fitness and gymnasium and playground facilities for the general public. But it's providing a lot of housing, a lot more than we'll ever do on that site. So it can be done. It does take a while, but I think this is a good step for us. Thank you.
Counselor Vogel.
Excuse me. Thank you, Council President. I obviously rise in favor of this as well. Just a kind of answer to a few of the comments made, aside from an agreement with the counselor who spoke. The outcome is not, we haven't reached the outcome right now. The outcome of the process, we haven't reached that. We are starting to get to that point, and the outcome is yet to come. We need more information, and that's exactly what it is that we're asking for. I don't believe that we're cavalier at all in our manner. I don't think that we are deferring to what the developers want. I think that we have outlined in a very comprehensive and compromising manner.
Counselor Vogel, you ask yourself, I'm sorry.
No, I agree with you.
You're off.
I'm off.
You might need a batter.
Park.
He's on now.
He's on now? It's okay?
I don't know, is that already dying?
No, you should be good.
Okay. I'll start over.
No, you don't have to.
In any event, my point being is that we're not at the end. We're at the beginning of the process. We're getting as much information as we can. We will share that openly and with excellence to the community around us. We're just asking for more information. We do absolutely positively have our priorities in mind, and they're across the board. Their priorities are of the housing, of the gym, of whatever it is comes our way, and I will stand firmly in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Anyone else? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I need to make a motion to remove the Brown School gym from the RFI.
Second.
Listen, I understand the intent of what we're trying to do here, and I understand, I've been part of many of these conversations as well. But I do think that we've heard from our seniors, right? We've heard from those people who supported affordable housing, and they're very forthright in saying what they're looking for. They're looking for senior affordable housing for our residents. But we all know that in a lottery kind of format, we may not know that they're supporting our residents. They're supporting residents in the area that are on the lottery list that will come in here along the way. So we're not saving the lady down the street or the man down the street. What we're doing is we're creating affordable units so people can live in Newburyport along the way. But we've also heard, we've heard from residents, and we've heard from abutters, and we've heard from parents, and we've heard from kids, and we've heard from the arts community, and we've heard from the adult rec community, that they need a place now. There's an urgency here. When 10-year-old kids have 9:30 to 10:30 gym time space to play, you know, to practice their sport, and it's squeezed, that's a problem for all of us. So there is some urgency here. And I understand why we want to include the gym, why we don't want to include the gym in terms of vetting a total space here to see what we can, hit the maximize button on this space for affordable housing. But I think we have an urgent request from our residents and the people that support us on a daily basis that they need something. They need a community space, they need a gym, and they need it now. It's going to involve all of us working together. I know my amendment is a bit controversial. I've been saying it from the beginning, though I haven't deviated it. It's not a surprise along the way because the more people I talk to, they say the exact same thing. We need something now. And this is a space we own. The city council owns it. And this is a space that we can make a decision on, and we can make a hard decision right now and say, we want the gym, and we're going to do what we can to activate it by year end. Now that, again, that involves cooperation, but that's my feeling on that. Thank you very much.
Counsel Zied?
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor of the amendment. You know, the gym has been the subject of much debate, but as I often try and remind people to think about things in a different lens, someday, somehow, there'll be a discussion or a debate about surplus and, you know, surplusing property. We had two projects recently that have come and gone. One is the fire station two, and the second one is the youth services project. Both of them involve lengthy, lengthy searches to find land on which to build. Those who are on the council recall the idea of building Station Two across the street from the old C and J at the trailhead of the Little River Nature Trail. There'll also remember other, what I would say are kind of cocky mammy ideas that came up over the time about different places to put it. Low Street, for example, on the search for NYS, you know, transparently not a project I've been overly supportive of, but from a land use perspective, many months, maybe years, went into trying to find different spaces. And now we're going to take a property that we own outright, that was taken by eminent domain in the 1920s, the parcel, and we're talking about just giving it up. This is not logical thinking. It is very hard to find land in the city. We now know that in very recent time, how difficult that is. And then secondarily, it's very expensive to build new structures. So why would you throw away something that you have and then go say, okay, we'll try and acquire other property elsewhere for other projects, or we'll try and purchase and build on other projects? And this is not meant to slide into a debate about other projects. I'm just saying from a land perspective, they're not making any more of it. We own this, we own it outright. It's illogical to think that we'd stand on this floor and vote to surplus that parcel. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment.
Just so I, I've got to clear, is to remove the gym.
I agree.
Oh, Counsel Lane, I see your hand.
Thank you. I too, I'm going to support that amendment. I grew up at 37 Milk Street. I mean, I, nobody knows this property or has affinity towards it quite me. A lot of times I would use that property as a kid. I would just go over and throw a tennis ball off the wall and catch over a baseball glove, and I just have a real sense here that personally, for me, it was big in my life. So I don't want to take away a community space, an asset that we have, merely just for, to give a developer more options for senior affordable housing. I don't agree with that. I think that this has to support all, everybody's standing up and saying, oh, you know, senior affordable housing, that's great, you do have a need for that. What we really have a need for, it sounds like, is a housing summit. That's what I'm hearing. There's a lot of conversation in the community about this, so. I know Adrian did one, it was very successful. I would recommend that to the administration. But to get back to the gym, I am going to support the amendment. I think we need that space. It's shared by all, we own it, it's easy to fix, it solves a lot of problems, it makes a lot of financial sense. So with that, yeah, I'm going to support that. I don't want this to go down the road, that gets lumped in and grilled. I will never support any RFI that doesn't keep that space as a gym. I will never go for it, so.
Thank you, Counsel.
With that.
Counsel Vogel, and then Counsel Cameron on the amendment.
Thank you, Counsel President. In fact, the RFI does include the gym, so we're not taking the gym out of the RFI. So that's not the point. The RFI is asking to let us know what you can do with the gym and the property as a whole. We haven't come to any conclusions that we're going to surplus the property yet, even if we are at all. So what we are asking for is information, and we're asking whether or not you can do as we've asked, that you can provide affordable housing and some community space along with the gym, and who knows what will come along. So to just, it's a very biased approach to take that gym out of the RFI, and is not a compromised position at all. The fact that the gym is in there along with the affordable housing is a beautiful compromise of this body. So I stand against that amendment. Let's find out, again, something that I have always said from the very, very beginning, let's get the information from the marketplace. Thank you.
Counsel Cameron.
Yeah, just, you know, speaking to the amendment, I'm going to be voting against it. I think keeping the site as coherent as possible for now, and at some point, there may be differentiation that we would all get to weigh in on, along with the mayor and the butters, et cetera. But I think it needs to, we need a holistic approach right now, at least get the information. And again, you know, I'm not a million percent sold on a gym there. I think we need a gym. I'm certainly supportive of one at Low Street, and I expect to support that, you know, hopefully to its conclusion. I am 100%, a million percent supportive of affordable housing because I know that can be done. It is done in other places. Can we keep the gym? Maybe I'm 60% of the way there, but pulling it out of this RFI and then just doing it kind of a go it alone with the gym, and we'll just develop that on our own, doesn't seem to me the right approach. I think keeping it one whole project at this point, again, getting the information, and maybe everyone will have what they want, which is affordable housing and a gym there someday, and those of us who want youth services and a gym there will get that. I mean, at some point, these municipal projects are the ones that cost us money. We are, we may put in money through CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust into an affordable housing development because typically communities do, but the, you know, 10, 15, 20, $28 million that are going to need to be raised to create housing at the Brown School, that's all coming from a multiplicity of other sources. For us, you know, we're going to have to pay for a gym, or gyms, or Low Street Youth Services. So that's sort of, you know, my approach to it. Maybe a developer for Brown School can find a way to roll this into their funding package. I don't know. But again, I think we're at the point where we're seeking information and continue to look at other examples of how these sort of projects have worked across the Commonwealth, and I think that's the way to go. So I will be voting no on the amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Con.
Great, thank you, Counsel President. I, you know, I think in terms of watching the process with the RFI, I think there's a lot of good points that have reached consensus, and it was really good to hear the conversation around those important pieces like the gym. I think keeping this item in here does allow, and I agree with those that spoke before the other counselor-at-large, that it does give an idea of just getting the costs, seeing the potential, just really it's that request for information. But given what we learned from that can probably help the city itself understand what would it take to make those community spaces, to make the gym space, especially at this location. So I would support keeping it in here, but mainly from that aspect of what we're really trying to gain in terms of the information we're seeking, information we really don't have. And especially, you know, I've heard mention of costs, what it would take for that gym, and it's really hard to pull out something and say we have ownership of it when we really haven't even looked at exactly what it's going to cost and how it's going to be actually managed and used and applied in this particular setting, especially when we talk about parking and other aspects of that involve. So I think right now with this holistic approach, we have the whole property, it's that parcel as how it is right now. It only makes sense to keep the parcel like it is with the protections as noted here. So I will also not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Wallace.
Thank you. Just a clarification. I'm a little confused when you say take out the gym. Can you just clarify that so that we're clear on the amendment?
Sure. Counsel McCauley?
I just wanted to remove it from the RFI process altogether.
So in other words, it would stay as is?
It would stay as is, and our next step would be to take steps to develop it.
Okay.
Further discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Just in closing, I hope, it wasn't my intent to relitigate a lot of the things that we talked about, but what I did want to mention here is that the property, regardless of what we do, we're going to impact the neighborhood. It was a school. It had great impact on the neighborhood between 8:00 and 2:00 o'clock every day anyway going forward. It was on-street parking, et cetera. I don't think anyone can foresee that the use in the gym would replicate the number of teachers that were there and the impact to the neighborhood that was there along the way. It already is zoned for X amount of parking, and there is street parking available. The points I'm trying to make here are two, is that for development purposes, is over 29,000 square feet of development space on a footprint. You could go up, you could add on it, all of those types of things. What we're talking about is 9,000 square feet as a baseline for the gym itself and the complex that would house the gym, et cetera, along the way with a bathroom. In terms of costing, we did get a price from EGA, and they did go through a, it was roughly 1.7 after value engineering. But when you, we went through with different contractors and did value engineering 2.0. So in the first value engineering, they needed to replace the roof, but the roof isn't leaking. So maybe we can defer that. Again, the discussions that I want to have, they want to replace the floor. Well, guess what? The floor is in good shape right now, and if we're talking about adult recreation, we don't necessarily need to replace the flooring right now. We certainly don't need the two EV charging stations that were proposed to go in there along the way. My point is, when you do an engineering reevaluation, let's say of 2.0 of where it was already, you're down to less than $500,000. And so for $500,000, we could activate a gym by the end of the year. And that's my point. We have a urgent need. We have folks that are telling us day in and day out that we have this need. And I don't, again, it wasn't my intent to relitigate this, but I do want to make a stand that say, I think we're making a mistake by putting this in the RFI and throwing it into a pile along the way. This 10,000 square feet is not going to impact the number of units that a developer would have. Some could also argue that removing this gym and any uncertainty of this in this particular aspect of the building makes a cleaner transaction on the school building itself. So thank you again.
Counsel Con.
Thank you, Counsel President. So if I'm understanding correctly, I think part of it is the conversations around really holding on to something that is seen as a value. But my one thing that I'm just going to ask all of us to think about, you know, we heard $1.7 million, which I do remember there were some costs and tables associated with that. And my understanding was, and I don't believe we ever got a bond order or anything to how we're going to fund that and pay for it, there's been conversations about value engineering. So I caution us to be a little bit careful in terms of whether or not we're really trying to do a short-term, quick, pressure-eyed situation and try to, really try to save something when we're really missing an opportunity of a bigger picture look that could have a longer-term effect. The 1.75 value engineering to $500,000, I've seen no numbers on that. I have nothing in front to really justify that this is an action to take. But what I do see is that what we're approving right now here is not really locking us into anything, and I think that's an important thing. However, if we take this line item out, we are locking ourselves in. What we're saying is we're committing 1.75 or whatever this cost is. We're saying as a group here, we're going to spend this money. And I'm not comfortable to make that decision tonight, but I am really in that position to look at something, get numbers, and maybe have a collective conversation as time comes along. So I really caution us to be really careful of what it means striking this item. Thank you.
Anyone that hasn't spoken on the amendment? All right, last round. Counsel Vogel.
So thank you very much, Counsel President. So yeah, just to reiterate exactly what the counselor-at-large had indicated, we are not locking ourselves into anything by approving this RFI. We are seeking information. Nothing says that we have to accept what comes back to us, nothing at all. As far as the cost associated with this gym supposedly, I have asked all along to see the documentation, but let's see how it's going to go. We have to, if we're going to do it and it's going to be at the price that we're talking about, let's see the documentation. Let's see that it's being bid at, you know, the proper state levels. Let's see that it's ADA compliant. Let's see that it's, you know, green structure. Let's see that. We haven't seen it. I've been asking for it. It's not here. So we can say it often and often again, that it's going to only cost $500, and we can be in there by the end of the year, but there's no documentation, there's no proof at all to that. It's pie in the sky.
Counsel Donahue, I see your hand.
Thank you, President. Yes, I do want to echo both at-large counselors that just spoke. I think I've definitely heard one too many times without any kind of real evidence to support that we could have a gym opening running by the end of the year. I just, I look very realistically and pragmatically, I just can't wrap my head around that being a legitimate possibility without actually knowing the cost. What I do know is that we are invested in Low Street for a gym and community space with youth services, especially as they take on a larger role. And also, I would like to add that as the ward counselor for the building and the three quarters of the building surrounding it, I would be a little remiss to not mention that I think there is a vast difference between infill and overdevelopment versus senior affordable housing development that, you know, we're hoping to maybe get 25 to 35 units. I don't, I mean, that's not infill like people selling off their backyards to developers that sell condos for $1 million. That's what I'm surrounded by in my neighborhood. That's not the same thing. This use would limit the parking if it's for senior affordable housing that avoid market. And that is absolutely true. I have yet to hear from a single abutter in my ward around the school building that truly could not look for senior housing and would much rather see market value housing and a community space on the ground floor. So I will not be supporting this amendment. It should not come as a surprise. I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Donahue. Counsel Wright.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just so that you know, to inform you on my vote, I don't think this binds us in any way, shape, or form, one way or the other. I too am not a fan of the process. The process has failed us in a number of ways, leading to this point. I'm hoping that it will turn around and we'll be happy with the process moving forward. I think there's a huge need for gym space in the city. I'm sympathetic towards that, but I don't think there's eight votes to spend any money on it at this point. And so as much as I'm ambivalent towards this process at the moment, I think I'm willing to let it go forward. There's still a lot of things that need to be resolved. There's money, there's zoning, there's, most importantly, there's community input, and that's been very lacking in this process to date. So I'll vote no on the amendment because I don't think it helps us at this time, but it doesn't bind us in any way. So thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Donahue, do you have your hand up again? I can lower it. All right. If there's no further discussion, roll call on the amendment.
Roll call on the amendment to remove the gym from the order. Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
No.
Counsel Zied.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
No.
Counsel Donahue.
No.
Counsel Con.
No.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
No.
Counsel Shan.
No.
Motion fails.
Counsel Zied.
Thank you. Back to the underlying question.
Back to the underlying question. I just wanted to read something really quick. So, one of the at-large counselors mentioned, you know, oh, there's a lot of unresolved questions that will need to be answered at some point, number of units, parking. And I just want to remind everybody, on September 30th, 2019, which now seems like a lifetime ago, thanks to COVID, this room, this floor was stood on, and the Brown School Overlay District, which contemplated every possible outcome, passed. And it encompassed with and without the gym, which has been the subject, obviously, of much conversation, with and without youth services, and was the product of many months. And if you think it's easy to convince the entire city, which is what I did, standing on this floor, to pass a zoning amendment like that, give it a try. I'm trying it again right now with short-term rentals. But we already contemplated those questions, and we answered them. One counselor was recused, who's still on the council today. The other, a couple were absent, and everybody else passed it. It passed nine. And by the way, there was an amendment on the floor at the time to try and increase the number of units to 24. It's interesting to hear the Ward Two counselor state 25 to 35 units. That's, talk about numbers we haven't heard about yet. That's one I haven't heard yet. And it passed. And so, that was the study of what this site can hold. And what's so frustrating about this process is, yes, it doesn't bind us, because I guess we're going to ask the developer what they think, but even at the same time, we've had these conversations. When, if we don't honor our own work, how are we going to expect anybody else to do it? Brown School Overlay District was ordinance number 33. It was dated 2019, but it passed in September. So, that may seem like a lifetime ago, but it wasn't that long.
Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just a few thoughts. So, I understand the need for seeking information. I think the best way to seek information is to talk to the residents and find out first what they are interested in. So, if there's a need for additional input and discussion sessions, I think that's really valuable and will get a lot of information. Because I think, as a community, it'd be nice to determine the best views. I think things have changed over the last 10 years about what's going to go in the Brown School. We have new groups coming in with arts ideas and, you know, adult rec. Things are changing with the parks and NYSS. There's going to be different divisions. I don't, we'll get updates on that soon enough, I'm sure. But all that needs to be put out there. And I think, you know, it's just such a great location for everybody, but to pass up a community center that has all these pieces, if possible, would be ideal. But of course, with affordable housing as well. So, and again, not saying that affordable housing is not important, but this is a big property that would be best for, you know, a variety of municipal uses, if possible. But I do want to say, just like I did on 59 Low Street, we can go through the RFI and do all this, but we need to do the engineering site plan. You need to know what fits on the site. You do a yield analysis. This is like Development 101, and you say, ideally, you go, you talk to your residents, like, what would you like to see? What would you like to see? And then get a few different scenarios. Like, okay, we want this much housing and this much of a gym or a park over here. And then you draw it up, because you can only fit so many cars on that site, and that is going to be your determining factor. Different uses have different vehicle requirements, but even if the developer wants all of this or says, well, I can do this or that, if it doesn't fit on the site, it doesn't fit on the site. And it's a simple, it's just a simple drawing that you have to do. You do three or four different, you know, versions of it. But I also want to say, we talked about the Article 97 with the playground, and that is very clear. But I would also argue, or this should be checked out, the basketball court is likely Article 97. After things changed in 2017, it doesn't have to be deeded. It can be done by historic use. You're taking recreational space away, so you may not have as much, you know, land there as you think. You almost could argue that the blacktop area is also Article 97 based on historic use. It's not a school anymore, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are some things that are unanswered, and if we just leave it to the developers and not throw out some of these other ideas, I think, you know, you're going to get out of it what you put into it. And I think we need to put more into it. Thank you.
Counsel Wallace, further discussion?
All right. So, the motion on the floor is to approve Order 428 as amended.
And may I ask, what you're, are you doing a receive and file?
A receive and file for Communication 464 and approval of 428.
Got it. Ready for the roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. To approve Order 428, to receive and file the communication. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
No.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
So, we have four noes. We have seven. I don't think it needs a full majority unless someone else knows more than I do.
No, we just needed six.
So, you don't know more than I do.
All right. Thank you. So, general government will be meeting next Monday night. We do have the committee of the whole item with a new city solicitor. It'll be 5:30. We also have two other appointments that we'll be going through as well. So, that's it for general government, license and permits.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to move to collectively approve applications 134, 135, 136, 137, 138, and 139.
Second.
You have four. Go for it. Go.
So, oh, thank you. I wasn't understanding what you said. All right, so, Application 134 is the Ninth Annual Harbor Side Half Marathon and 5K, et cetera. Just a small piece of it. Newburyport, this is the ninth year. They know what they're doing. All their information is in order. Should I miss anything, my fellow committee members, please add on. All three, all of these were approved three to zero, with the exception of the Howard Street Block Party, because the one counselor was tardy to the meeting. So, the Application 135, the pause for cause, we, actually, that was a question as to why we even had it in our packet. It's taking place solely on the rail trail, which we know is the park. And they've been approved by the parks, but checking in with the clerk on that, he suggested that perhaps because of the intersection at Water Street, I mean, Washington Street, it might involve a public way. It does not. Given that anyway, we did approve it for what it's worth. There was a question also about Application 137. It appears that all of that is on private property. However, I guess in years past, from what I understand, it does create quite a traffic situation, and they do have a police officer and detail in place to help with the traffic. So, with that, it's before us. I guess that's considered use of the public way. We also approve that. 138 is the Lions Club Bed Race. I challenge any of you to vote no on that. Pardon me, I don't mean to be so cavalier. We know what the bed race is all about. We approve that. And it's a joy also, just, I wish you guys could have all been to this meeting, because to see those guys who are heading up this effort is just, it just makes you smile. There's so much into it. Oh, I skipped 136, and the 136 is the Yankee Homecoming in general. The reason I skipped is because there was a question about it, but I received information that it's okay for me to include it in the complete here. The one thing that I can mention is the restructuring of the way between the sea level and the building next to it. That way can get congested. They've gone back and taken out a few of the vendors. They've talked to the fire department, the police department. They're comfortable with the space and the spacing. So, with that, we approve that one as well. Then the next one is the Howard Street Block Party, 31 Howard. That was all together. So, with that, I ask, we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Discussion on any of those? All right, roll call.
Roll call on approving 134 through 139. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
If we may, motion to approve Communication 484, motion rather to receive and file Communication 484. This is the late-file item that came in the Newburyport parade information that was on our desk. It went, came to committee. We'd like to receive and file it to clear the docket.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Motion, receive and file Communication 484. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
And Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
And Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counsel President?
Okay. Counselor Cameron, planning and development.
Thank you. Motion to approve Appointment 391, Mark Sedron to Historical Commission.
Second.
Thank you. So, planning and development met before this meeting. Mr. Sedron was not able to be with us because he's been traveling. This would be a reappointment to the Historical Commission, I believe, through 2026. We did vote to approve him three to zero. He's known to several of us, and, you know, has had several years of service on the Historical Commission, and also probably the longest resume we've ever seen for an appointment. Forty-seven pages. He's a very accomplished medical professional, so we did approve his reappointment three to zero.
Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call approving 391, Mark Sedron. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
10-1. Appointment passes.
Counselor Cameron.
Thank you. Motion to approve Appointment 394, Madeline Nash to Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Thank you. We did meet also on this appointment, this, I almost said this morning, but this evening. And Madeline was in the meeting with us. So, she's been on the Affordable Housing Trust since 2010. She works for a quasi-state organization that is involved with creating affordable housing. That is CDEC, the Community Economic Development Assistance Corporation. She had worked prior in Lowell at Coalition for a Better Acre, where she had been involved, strangely enough, with the preservation and adaptive reuse of two historic school buildings in that area. So, she's been on the Affordable Housing Trust, and she walked us through some of the things they're involved in, in terms of currently downpayer assistance funds that they got through CPA. They're in the midst of the Housing Production Plan, which is in process. The Brown School, of course, we're all very well aware of. They work closely with the planning department and looking at all housing needs, not just affordable, but across the spectrum. We did speak a little bit about sort of changes at the state level with this administration, you know, talking a lot about housing and the need for housing across the state in all communities. And we did vote three to zero to support her appointment.
Thank you, Counsel Cameron. Discussion? Roll call.
This is approving Nash, Appointment 394. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve Appointment 396, Jane Peely to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Thank you. I know some of us know Jane from her work on the Resiliency Committee, so I kind of got a little confused earlier today, but I probably shouldn't mention that because that meeting wasn't recorded. But she, this is for her to be on the CPC. She's been on since 2014. She was also on the Resiliency Committee. There's no, no sort of governmental connection between the two, but they're just both areas that she feels she can contribute. She has a planning background. She feels CPA is just an amazing vehicle to push forward community needs that otherwise we wouldn't be able to work on, and we did approve this three to zero in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Cameron. Discussion? Roll call.
Motion to approve Appointment 396. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Order 450, Newburyport Black History Initiative Interpretive Signs.
Second.
Thank you. We met with Jordi Vining and several folks who've been involved in this, including Sid Rashke and Bethany Droual from Museum of Old Newbury, and Kristen, whose name, last name I did not catch. So, the funding for this, you know, initiative has been through the CPC and approved by the council. There have been, I believe, seven signs approved by the Parks Commission on parks land. These would be for four signs, and they are in your packet where they're located. So, four signs in downtown, just, you know, providing some history and background on, you know, black involvement in Newburyport. As Sid said, black history in Newburyport is our history, and I think she made a great point. And they showed us one of the examples, which may be in the packet, in front of Wolf Tavern with just somebody who worked at the Wolf Tavern, but it's a great picture. That's the Harris Street Parking Lot, for those who know the connection. So, there would also be one marker at the Old Hill Berry Old Ground. We asked questions about sort of the process and how that went for the Parks Commission to approve the other ones, so getting clarity on the number of signs. And also asked about the Old Hill Berrying Ground. That is, that's a city cemetery. There's no Parks connection there. They'll be installed, if not by the end of this calendar year, by, you know, by mid-2024. And we did approve this three to zero. Thank you.
Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call approving Order four fifty. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to approve Order four five six, which is a preservation restriction at three forty-four Merrimack Street.
Second.
Thank you. He may be in the attendees. Nick Cracknell, who is representing the developer and the owner. He would be, yeah. If necessary, he's available. So this is all in the packet. The most recent version is in the packet. I confirm that. So this is at three forty-four Merrimack Street. This is a standard purchase, excuse me, a standard preservation restriction. It's mostly external on the existing structure with an asterisk that I'll talk about. So this is part of a so-called six-C development where a new structure is going to be put on the back of this lot. And it's also there in case I garbled some of this. So in discussions with the Planning Board, on the Planning Board, which is also in the packet, the Planning Board decision gave them some additional flexibility to the developer in exchange for this preservation restriction. So there's no city liability. The city would always have a right of enforcement. And the preservation restriction would be on the existing structure, which is to the front of the building. Again, it's at three forty-four Merrimack. So standard preservation restriction. Parts of the old house will be restored, which is going to cost about $150,000. And the specific items are listed in the Planning Board decision. There was also involvement from the Preservation Trust as an external nonprofit, sort of extra eyes and an extra stakeholder in here around the chimney and the fire boxes, which will be preserved. And that is in the clean version that's in the packet. So the Mass Historic did review and approve this, as did our own Newburyport Historical Commission. And we approved it three to zero in committee.
Discussion? Counselor Z.
I just have a question for the Planning Director. Could you just tell us a little bit more about what the trade was? The six-C trade was, in other words? So if I understood from the chair correctly, we received the PR and some restoration valued at around $150,000 in exchange. What was the, what was granted? What was the relief? I don't think that's the right word. But what was granted to the developer? An extra unit? Square footage?
Yeah. Could you elaborate?
Yes.
Great. So, yeah, the developer was given an option to do a second dwelling unit on the property. So while there were two dwelling units in the existing structure, the Planning Board, under the six-C special permit, was able to grant the property owner in exchange for the preservation restriction and to other particulars, some of the conditions of the design, the approval of the property, to put a second structure on the lot. So you could, of course, discuss with the appraiser about what that valuation or increase in value might be. But it was for the purpose of having a second dwelling unit and a second structure.
So the property started as two units and it will end as two units? It's just one will be in the original structure or is it going to end as three?
Two structures in total. One original, two in total, yeah.
Structures, but units.
Two.
Right, still two.
Two units, okay. Thank you. Two buildings, two units. One unit in each building, if I understood correctly.
That's correct.
Further questions? Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. This is for the Planning Director as well. We had a, we had an ordinance in there where folks were splitting lots and then there was a penalty of X amount per square foot that would be charged on the second building going forward. I forget the numbers and all of that type of stuff. Is this, will this PR offset this so that it wouldn't trigger this penalty going forward? Is that my understanding of this?
I did not recall. I'm sorry, I dropped my head over this Friday. I got right before or right after. I think it was subject to this condition included it. But you're correct, there was that for those folks today that requires that contribution. That's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
We were informed by today. We were informed that $40,000 has been placed towards the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, so they did voluntarily or?
As part of the.
Okay, thank you.
Based on the square footage.
Sorry, thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, Director Port. Roll call.
Motion to approve Order four fifty-six, three forty-four Merrimack Street. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne. Counselor Dunne.
You're muted, Counsel Donahue. Come back to her. Counselor Donahue.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne, are you there? Maybe we'll skip over absent.
Nine-one.
Okay.
Nine-one-one. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Counsel Cameron?
Just in terms of the future of the Planning and Development Committee in our meetings, I'm very going to take up the short-term rental zoning amendment sometime. We're going to be looking at calendars. So let me know of all your vacation plans in June and July. What we'd like to do is try to get it out to the full council. I think we have one August meeting, August fourteen. So, you know, as we're kind of getting through the budget phase, I'll be in touch and try to find something that works for everybody. Thank you.
Question, Counsel Khan?
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel President. Just to the Chair, I cannot remember by note, the Planning Board closed the hearing. So what is the date then that we basically started the sixty? Is it sixty, ninety days?
August fifteenth. August fifteenth.
August fifteenth. Okay, sorry if you said that. I missed, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan.
And that's second reading by August fifteenth, just so I understand.
Is it second reading?
I think it's first.
First reading, okay.
Okay.
All this will be done on this round.
Thank you.
All right. Public Works and Safety, Counsel Wallace.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Motion to approve Ordinance one five zero, amendments to municipal.
Second.
Parking fees. All right. This is just some changes to the parking fees, to standardize them to a certain extent and to add some extra fees in for residential permits. This was sponsored by Counsel McCauley. So if he wouldn't mind, I'll defer to him if he would like to elaborate.
Thank you, Counsel President and Chair. This is a project that we were working on with the planning, with the parking office as well. This also has gone before the Parking Advisory Committee and gotten their feedback as well. This ordinance that you see in front of us has three changes to it. One is to combine the employee quarterly permit, all-day parking facilities, and Titcomb Street Garage. They were two different prices. They were done originally to draw people into the garage, et cetera, along the way. Now that it's a little bit more mature, the thinking is that we can have one price going forward, eliminate some confusion along the way. Again, this is consistent with the 2017-18 parking study. It's just taken a while for us to implement it going forward. The second one involves resident-only parking areas. For those areas in the city that are resident-only, they currently have a $0 fee and they have no limit on the number of cars that they can have. We have anecdotal and real evidence that suggests people are, have multiple cars, parking them on the street, not utilizing the driveways, things like that. And there is a real cost associated with this with the plan, with the parking office going forward. There is a cost to process these free permits, et cetera, along the way. Again, consistent with recommendations made with the, with the parking study done, they have made them a request for $10 an hour, excuse, $10 a year for an annual parking permit for residents. With the idea being that people with multiple cars will park one inside and then still have. And then complementing that is the resident daily street permit. We have a resident over, again, in these restricted areas of resident-only parking. And that fee was go from $0 to $5 as well. So there's three changes in this one altogether. Parking Advisory Committee advised us to bring it out to the committee. And as the Chair had mentioned, the committee had voted three to zero to bring it up.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counselor Khan?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Yes, and I'm on the Parking Advisory Committee, so I do remember we talked about this. But I do have one question, clarification, I should know this. But under the Titcomb Street Garage, that $60, is that annual or is it just a one-time? And it's not clear to me here, so I just get clarification on that.
It's a quarter.
Quarterly. So the quarterly, employee quarterly permit, all-day parking facilities and Titcomb Street Garage, just however it's noted, it's a little confusing how it is here. So if all these are a quarterly amount, it'd be helpful to see that $60 per quarter. Just for clarification. Thank you.
Counselor Z.
I just want to refresh on the, the visitor pass was never very official, I think. So how do you currently do that? Do you have paper?
Brief history is, it was always official, more or less. But we had plackets.
Yeah.
And hanging plackets come hanging placate abuse. In other words, we found a number of employees downtown. Just had a relative or friend or somebody who gave one to them. So we eventually weaned ourselves off of that. Now they're digital. And there's a cost of digital permits. There's a cost to any permits. So it would go from zero as a digital permit to $5.
So the owner puts, goes on a website and puts in the plate.
Yes, it should be clear. It's all done online.
Yeah, okay.
Further questions? Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why the residential annual street permit has a different cost than the residential annual paid parking facilities permit? So, you know, to use the paid parking facilities for a resident would be $15. For the residential on-street is $10. I mean, why not have the same?
I'm happy to answer that. Probably, again, language may be confusing, but the one you're seeing at fifteen and five is actually for the lots.
Yeah.
The one you're seeing for annual street permit is actually for the streets. It's in the two-hour zone.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just asking why, why not make them equitable? $15 whether you're doing a residential or in the lots as a resident, you're paying for your parking.
Yeah, I mean, historically, there's always been a split on the resident into regular and senior. And that goes back to when the program was approved. And other than that?
Let me ask my question maybe in a different way. So I don't live in a residential zone, right? But I do pay $15 a year to be able to utilize the municipal lots, right? So if I were to live in the residential area, I'm paying for parking to be on the street near my house. I guess I just don't understand why they wouldn't both be $15 or both be $10.
Well, your option is set in the world. Have a policy question. It's just historical the way it's been. We just haven't touched fifteen and five for years. And frankly, they're comparatively speaking, very low.
I would completely agree with that.
Very low. But there's only so much rate increase that I think is palatable during our election year.
Counsel Vogel and Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Counsel President. I have a high rise in support only because of the work that has been done. But I just do need to speak out with regard to employee parking. First of all, keeping employees, period, is a nightmare, particularly when the employees are over thirty years old. So I understand the cost of, you know, $10, which is actually $40 for the year. And if you multiply that times, the sixty times four, is considerable. I wish that we had an opportunity to really engage our community, our businesses in the community in what it costs to keep employees, what it costs to keep employees happy. And parking is one of the big things. And I'll talk about the same thing when we talk about the shuffling. Thank you.
Counsel Khan?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Counsel President. Not to belabor it. I do want to share the Parking Advisory Committee did hear from administration that there's going to be an overall kind of parking review and study done. So a lot of the questions we might have on these rates, there is going to be an assessment, a study done. And I think they definitely need to be revisited in many categories. So I do want to give folks a heads up that that is something that's going to be undertaken. Thank you.
Counsel Cameron?
Not to belabor it. I say that. I will also belabor it. Yeah, I'll support this. I think these are, you know, solid, well-thought-out incremental changes. Yes, and pleased to hear what the at-large Counsel said about the Parking Advisory Committee and looking at this holistically soon because especially as we're taking spots off of the waterfront, it's going to, it's going to change. It's going to change that quite a bit. And I know there's other, you know, interest in looking at overnight parking for people that live downtown. But, yeah, I think we, we just need to continually monitor this. I do remember reading some data. We sell a lot of, I think we sell a lot of employee passes that there's, there's no, we sell more passes, for example, than people could possibly use the garage. And somehow it works out, but, yeah. I should attend the Parking Advisory Committee and maybe, you know, maybe kind of get up to speed on that. But I think this makes sense for now. And again, I mean, maybe we're living in the Newburyport bubble and I, you know, parking, I know, is always a third rail, whether it's related to housing, neighborhoods, Airbnb in downtown. So I know it's always a challenge. But, yeah, we really don't charge that much. I'm somebody who feels very fortunate that I got parking during COVID where I work in Boston for 200 bucks a month. And that's a deal because I was paying 20 bucks a day, which was a deal. But, you know, I know it is tough on employees, but, yeah, I think 60 bucks quarterly is okay. If you divide that down by day, I think that's pretty reasonable. So anyway, I'll be supporting it and appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on approving Ordinance one fifty. Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes. And yes, I'm the last one. I'm sorry, my button was lost.
Okay. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes. Counsel Wallace?
Motion to approve Ordinance one fifty-one, ordinance to amend sections with respect to residential parking zones.
Second.
Thank you. So this is to add an additional residential zone into, into the parking zones. I will let Counsel McCauley explain it better.
Counsel McCauley.
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Chair. This is actually just a redefinition of the residential zones. We had in-street and the playground area separate. We folded that into ward, into Zone Two. Parking Advisory asked for an accompanying map, so it would be easier visual. That's also in your packet here now. So all this does is redefine the zones, Zone 1 and Zone 2, and collapses in-street into Zone 2.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Discussion? Roll call.
Roll call approving order 151. Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley? Yes. Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 153.
Second.
An ordinance with respect to anti-shuffling. So this one is to not allow shuffling of cars moving from space to space over an extended period of time. And what was interesting is apparently the clerk and his parking staff can actually monitor this. And so they know, like, who's been moving for how long. And apparently also, this is fairly common in other municipalities to have some sort of lot like this. But again, I defer to the sponsor for further information.
Thank you, Counsel President and Chair. The only thing I'd add to that is that this, the shuffling is not only in parking lots, but also on street corners. The LVR can handle that. And this is very, very much consistent with the recommendations, again, made by 2017, 2018 traffic study. It's taken us a while to implement them, but here they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'll rise opposed. Not on the basis of certainly it's happening and it's probably not appropriate that it does happen. But again, as a business owner and the need for employees to park, there's a major expense in employees having to go out to shuffle. So it's not, it's not necessarily, you know, if you consider the fact that you have an employee or five employees that have to go out every couple, three hours or whatever it might be to move their cars around, it's a tremendous amount of lost time that you're paying people for. So it's not necessarily advantageous, but it certainly is, it would be disadvantageous to not allow it. Again, I would be pleased to be part of the parking discussion because employees and employers really need to be considered in any type of reshuffling of our ordinances. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on order 153 anti-shuffling. Counsel Vogel?
I don't know.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
No.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
No.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Anything else, Counsel Wallace?
That is it for tonight. I just want to say that we have a lot of items still in committee. There's a lot going on with streets, sidewalks, new DPS director. But we will do our best to keep moving through. And having new DPS director there is very encouraging. He's been communicating with residents even over email and trying to solve problems. And I think we're going to get into a good rhythm with having somebody at our meetings from DPS on a regular basis. So I will pull that out. And I will keep you all posted. The meetings are not normally scheduled through the budget hearings because there was conflict, but we'll still try to do one a week and get through all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry. I have a good order. I'm going to quicken up my.
Sure, Counsel Donahue.
For those of you who have not had Jingles vaccinations, I had to recommend that you get them. That's my PSA for you all. And I apologize if we roll call these past several.
Thank you, Counsel Donahue. Roll call on adjourning.
Adjourning is, the first was Counsel Z. Second was, thank you, Counsel Vogel. Yes, adjourning. Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.